It's Juvenes! Ado Bao, Ado Bao, eya Ado Bao! Kwelele, kia seyati madama! Keli kia seyati madama! Keli kia seyati madama! Keta kia seyati madama! Kure kia seyati madama! Keta kia seyati madama! Nansere kia seyati madama! Kire kia seyati madama! Kire kia seyati madama! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Kili kia seyati madama! Koni kia seyati madama! Kiri kia seyati madama! Elana kia seyati madama! Kiri kia seyati madama! Kela kia seyati madama! Kire kia seyati madama! Kire kia seyati madama! Ado Bao, Ado Bao, eya Ado Bao! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Keta kia seyati madama! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Kiri kia seyati madama! Kiri kia seyati madama! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Ado Bao, Ado Bao, eya Ado Bao! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Kiri kia seyati madama! Kiri kia seyati madama! Kiri kia seyati madama! Kiri kia seyati madama! I say, ado Bao, Ado Bao! Ado Bao, Ado Bao, eya Ado Bao! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Ado Bao, Ado Bao, eya Ado Bao! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Ado Bao, Ado Bao, eya Ado Bao! Kene kia seyati madama! Kene kia seyati madama! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Arisa kala para, madama! Karama kia seyati madama! Kiri kia seyati madama! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Yes! Kere la kesi! Akena! Kete, kete, kama! Kwelele kia seyati madama! 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 Oma be kia na 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 na! Mmm, mmm! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Oma be kia na 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 na! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Oma be kia na 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 na! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Oma be kia na 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 na! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Kwelele kia seyati madama! Oma be kia na 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 na! Kwelele kia seyati madama! 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 Good friend, good friend!
Welcome, welcome you! This is a nice day for my people. You have to welcome to the residence of the President of the John Nation. By the seat at your back, it shows that the authorities also here. Therefore, we can say this is my president as asking to tell you that the John will have the tradition. You are in this office and residence. So therefore, we need to do that tradition, we need to display that tradition. You are a good visitor, of course, visitor. Therefore, there is need to properly welcome you into his house before you state your mission. So by the tradition, I need to ask for a spokesperson, okay? The people who wait somewhere, who hold, who hold, who hold. As a young man, I want to meet President of the John Nation. So my mother, my mother will be me, they will be me, they will be me, they will be me. Ah, Kula will be me, then Kula will be me. For situations of the country, ah, for the member that cashless person, they don't go to pay money.
Mr. President, of our glorious John Nation. The executive members of the INC, the clan chairman of INC, other leaders that are gathered here. Mr. President, first, we want to thank God on this wonderful day. Giving the ABC flag era the opportunity to come and see with INC. Mr. President, you remember some years back, 2014, 2015. I wanted to be governor of this state. And of course, I was prepared by what I saw right from the days of, by being the councillor and chairman of local government. And over the period, I felt that the John Nation has not gotten a fair share in the distribution of the wealth, which the John Nation contributed reasonably for the force of the state government. I said I wanted to be governor so that John people can have their own equitably. Ro people will have their own, Chekri people will have their own, Sokho people will have their own, and Yama people, Dogwa people will have their own in an equitable form. Over the years, we have not seen it, we have not seen it in this state. Unfortunately, my desire was cut off by the debate of, you know, creation in this state. Now, when I was advisor to the Bori on open regional planning, I travelled to Denmark for a forum, open renewal forum, open renewal forum. And there, what I saw, I saw a situation where in Denmark at that time, 2005, they had what we call integrated, you know, renewal system and a climate planning that planned for the communities in Denmark for 50 years. So anybody that comes to government is that plan that you have to follow. Every community knows what they will have in a year's time, in two years' time. When I came back, I sat down with the Bori and I wrote the Delta State Open Renewal Law. And was sent to the House of Assembly. I was never invited any day to defend it. And that is why the law today, the Open Renewal Law, is not functional in this state. And I thought that when I become governor of the Republic of Paraguay. And at that time, I also do, so many professionals from this state, the legals, were there for six months, talking about what we are going to do for this state. So what we are doing, in a day or two, we take a topic, let's introduce it. How do we want the creation to be in this state? We discuss it and agree. Unfortunately, that was not achieved. From 2015 to 2022, I've been praying to God. I said, "God, give us somebody that can do the thing that I couldn't do." And then in 2022, I met a young man, I call him young man because I senior him. I met a young man. And he also had the same ideas that I had. For a very long time, he put up a team, like I did in 2014. A team to put up what should be done in this state. And he gave out with the end agenda. Every sector is addressed in that way. What to do, when to do it, how to do it, who to do it, everything. And when I discussed and discussed and discussed and discussed with him, I realized that what he has produced is even better than the one I did. Mr. President, I met a man who has a passion for this state. I met a man who has a human heart, who has a feeling for humanity. I met a man who thinks about the old people in this state. I met a man who thinks about the men, the women, the youths, the young guys, everybody. And I said, "This is the man that I'm for." And because of our coming together and trying to do things, the state chairman of the party said, "Arubu, please, you have to do something very serious. Come as to pretend how we are going to do elections in this state." Mr. President, you know that today, there is nothing I need from this state. I can never be secretary of government, I can never be commissioner, I can never be chairman of the board, can never be anything. But when they told me that, I said I would do. One, to see that we drive this state to the level that this state should be. Two, to see that whatever is due for every area in this state, they should be giving to it. Whether it's appointments, whether it's construction, development, whether it's economic expansion, whatever it is. Mr. President, that was why I accepted it. And today, by the grace of God, he has gone around rallies, around all the local governments in this state. In fact, even though we are not in the party, he insisted that he wants to talk to the people. So in every local government, he visited three areas in every local government. Something that even the sitting government cannot do. They are visiting only local government in this state. But he decided to visit three, three areas in every local government to talk to the people, to tell them about what he wants to do, to tell them about how he wants to take this state to the next level. To tell them that education used to be in this state, we used to take number one in education in this state, and that he wants to bring that back to this state. To tell them that we used to be number one in sports in this state. But today, we are importing, you know, sporting officials, athletes, to come from other state to do it. He decided to go around the local governments to tell them that, listen, the two economic roads we have in this state, from Ugele to Zora, to Pali, to Asaba. For all these years, they can't complete it. To tell them that this road from Eko to Abraca, an economic road, valuable, good enough for the people of this state, cannot be done for all these years. Mr. President, I did my youth service in Akwabom. That was 1986, 1985, 86. Uyo, I served in Uyo, and Uyo used to have only one road. They had only one restaurant. But as a minister in 2012, when I visited Uyo, I couldn't believe my eyes. The governor took me to the governor's lodge, the government house. He brought Julius Vega to build it. It was completed in seven months. And the government house in Akwabom is finite and they are so rotten for the purpose of it. The airport was built in eight months. They have the best of all the digital systems in the state of Cota. We have today the finest, you know, state of Cota in this area. Mr. President, worrying today is the slop, the slop. No jobs. All the companies have been driven away from worrying. But Mr. President, today we have a man, who is the target, the target. They say that we take this state to the next level. And I've been going around everywhere. Your son, your son is the DJ of the campaign. And I said, "It is time to now visit my home, our home, to get blessings from the President of the John Nation." Mr. President, that's why we are here. That's why we are here. We are humbled when I came in this morning, excellency Mr. Chairman, when I came in this morning, he has loaded me with that.
It's a blessing, my lady.
Yes. Mr. President, I want to appreciate you and your team. Since you became the President of INC, you have gotten a new name for the John Nation. Over the period, I took upon myself a number of times to discuss with the governors and advisors, "Mr. You need a credible person to lead the INC, like the Amizi, like Garua, like Gudua, everything." And from the day you became President of INC today, the John Nation is another platform. The John Nation is respected again. And anywhere you go, anywhere you have appeared, people have called me many times. They said, "Now you have a president." Mr. President, today, I bring to you a man of many colors, a man that deeply reads it, a man that has a passion for this state. He has the heart of a patriot. He will, he's going to use his mind to tell you one or two things. It are the John people will know. When there are two things in a place, the one is always better. It are the John people will know which way to follow. He has gone around and he has also made some promises. He said, "I had a generation is coming in John land." Because when I was discussing with him, three critical things are asked from him. I said, "Well, Okoa gave himself three universities, the John Nation was forgotten. I want to invest in the John land, are you going to do it?" He said, "Yes." I said, "Today, John Nation is in darkness. We want the 33 high tension KPA from Ugele to be set down at the money, so that everywhere will be connected. Are you going to do it?" He said, "He's going to do it." I said, "I have to move it there." The other road from Orroa to Bumandi, even though it is not a federal government project, I thought to the John land, "Let's do it. We are doing it, and let's go with it, and stop there." I said, "This road, are you going to do it?" He said, "He will do it." Mr. President, he's going to tell you more. My presidents, my leaders, our clan president, it's now my honor, invite to talk to you, the ABC governorship cabinet, and by the grace of God, the next executive governor of this state. His excellency Oba, Oma Gueye, the operator of Oma Gueye. Mr. President, thank you very much.
Ah, Izo.
Yeah.
Ah, Izo.
Yeah.
Izo Kabemiu.
Yeah.
Lu Buwadu.
Yeah.
Isuku Wadu. Sekiri Alkito. Sekiri Isuku Uru Bujo. Yeah, and I have a new Shigwar.
The President of the John National Congress. The John National Congress, inclusive of the clan president. Ladies and gentlemen. Mr. President, I should begin by introducing myself. It's not something I do in my routine business. But the assumption is, I am a public figure. And who I am and what I am is already in the public domain. But this is a very, very big institution. An institution whose work, whose decision could tilt the election wrong way or the other. Whose decisions will be profound, especially here in the John Nation. Where your decision is made, for to be good, that people know that decision is informed. So I introduce myself. I have a Gua, Omo, and Ibe. I come from Ugele lots, in Delta Central, Central area. I went to secondary school, in San Jose's College of Numba. I'm a village boy. I'm not as privileged as so many who went to government college or further government colleges. That's because I grew up, my grandparents in the village. I went to San Jose's College of Numba. I still have a lot of classmates alive. They know me, and I know them. Then after, I went to University of Benin, where I studied law. Practiced law for so many years, and went to the United States, where I studied for my masters in law, at Tulane Law School in New Orleans, Louisiana. Then after, I practiced law in the United States, in California besides. And I remain an attorney in good standing till today. Sometime, only about 2003, 2002, I came back to Nigeria, of desire of representing my people in the House of Representatives in AlUjja. I fought to represent them in Ugele, Upeka Polity. Mr. President, I'm not so sure you make deep in our local politics here, but they know what they are, they did at the time. They maneuvered me out of the race to the House. And that was how my trajectory in politics changed. Otherwise, I want to be the career in the Lethbridge North Parliament. As fate will have it, despite that maneuver and loss, I was appointed the first executive assistant of the governor James Boli. The only executive assistant at the time, I say so because today, it's a funny, you may have heard about the barrage, thousands of executive assistants. Every village that has a executive assistant, for, you know, because of what they saw in the way and manner I put that office to use. From there, I became a commissioner and a member of the state executive council. And after that, I served as secretary to state government. In 2015, 2014, 2015, on the run of the 2015 general election, unable to secure the nomination for the governorship of the state on the platform, I decided to put aside all of my frustrations and moved to the Labour Party, where I ran and won the race to become the senator representing Delta Central, Central District. Mr. President, I was re-elected senator again in Delta Central in 2019. Mr. President, it's a very big deal, because in this zone... Because in the zone where I come from, people don't get re-elected by second term. The assumption is that one term is enough for you. Unlike in North where you have senators go from three, sometimes four terms. And here in South, I think here, someone inherited, I believe. People stay here in the neighborhood. After my reelection, Mr. President, I was elected by my colleagues as Deputy President of the Senate. Mr. President, in my capacity as Deputy President of the Senate, I leveraged on the office to provide representation to my people. And for the first time, as acknowledged by all, I was able to bring dividend democracy to every nook and cranny of my Central District. Because there is no village in my Central District, no community, no town, where I have not provided solar light. For those who are not able, of course, there's no way we could have transformers. We do electricity everywhere. But most of the communities as well will also push to have electricity posts by providing transformers. In addition to that, in addition to that, Mr. President, we tried to intervene the education system or we felt that the rot was too much and that we needed intervention. And all, most of the communities in my Central District also tried to either renovate the schools and or construct new schools. And then after, provided furnishing for all of most of the schools. We don't have children studying sitting on the floor. There are also communities where we thought we could intervene by bringing, constructing some roads, which we did. Some that were in danger of being lost to the rivers, to search, and indeed provided shore protection. We provided I C T centers in all the local governments. Some places, a minimum of two I C T centers. And then, of course, what I'll call the grand jewel will be the establishment and the construction of the federal technique. A school, a bar, a command and state. Mr. President, this is what I did for my Central District. I also geared off my Central District to provide dividends as well. Starting first with the battle to give the standing legal framework for the Maritime University at Okeroko. Those situated outside of my Central District, we saw it as a delta project. We believed that one is good for the Jod people, it is good for the Obo people, it is good for the Isoku people, good for indeed all of us in Delta State. And we all took it upon ourselves to fight for that. Even as we speak, despite the battle with weight, we still have lingering funding mechanism that is yet to be signed into law by Mr. President. But that's not in the goal, it's not in you, in your petroleum. Likewise, in Maritime, still in Okeroko, there's a battle between the domicile in education and all in the Masa, transportation. And of course, you may be underlying history. But of course, as a presiding officer, we are more realistic in our approach than regular colleagues in the Senate and the rep. Who for the most part, we also want to understand the one result. That's why we're seeing some issues in funding, asking for what we know the criteria will never have to. So, I have taken upon myself, after consulting with brothers, of fellow and others, consulting with the management of the University, Maritime University of Okeroko, and the leadership of the Masa and the Minister, all in my office, trying to work something out. And the barest minimum of agreed, we've accepted, is that we should not be getting anything less than what Academy Adoro, Academy Adoro is a great, you can read the background, a great percent of the Masa. I'm not sure if you go like that. But whatever the case, we almost come into closure so that we can get the proper funding for that. In Delta North, we've also constructed roads. Normally brought to my attention as Deputy Senate President, I intervene because the roads constructed. I went to my old school, it was in Dasten Trail Zone. We do a lot of work there, a lot of constructions and stuff like that. Bottom line is, we have done a lot. And because of what I have done, I believe, given my experience in the government, my experience in national assembly, my experience at state level, my educational qualifications, I believe I am sufficiently equipped to provide leadership for Delta State following the 2023 general election. Now, Mr. President, it isn't just my qualification alone. In the course of these services I've rendered and offices I've held, I've come to appreciate the challenges these states faced. In the course of the campaign, I've gone around. I think for the first time, I'm to a good candidate traverse the length and breadth of the state. Not upland, upland is for everyone. Everybody goes upland. But I wanted to have a direct feel of what our brothers and sisters in the Jod Nation, our brothers and sisters in Shakiri Nation. I wanted to see a free life and a lift in the riverine areas. The only relationship, the only contact I've made in the past was to Guaramatu Kingdom. We had frequented my capacity as Commissioner of Berapa S L G. But in the course of this campaign, I had to go around everywhere. I'm going through these places. I saw, Mr. President, don't you respect, that apart from the Jors who lived upland, there is no life, you don't know respect, no life in the riverine areas. All they have there, all they have there, Mr. President, is existence, not life, they are not living there. They are merely, are barely existing. And I wonder why. Delta State is a very, very rich state. In fact, we are the richest state in the Niger Delta and one of the richest states in Nigeria. And that wealth, it don't come by accident. It's a function of a contribution of the Jor oil-bearing communities, the Shakiri oil-bearing communities, the Obo oil-bearing communities, the Isoku oil-bearing communities, and of course, the Indukwa oil-bearing communities. Mr. President, we try to know that in the past seven and a half years of the river, going on eight years, under Okoa, Delta City received about 4.2 trillion naira. This figure we received from the Office of the Accountant General. This has come by way of fact allocations, by way of deprivation, by way of our I G R, declared I G R, a lot of it is declared. And then, of course, from time to time, special payments made by federal government arising from from under calculation, you know, of payment. And on top of that, they still have been from Delta City government also got a loan or loans to the tune of about 800 billion naira. Now, Mr. President, the consensus are there among the Obo people, among the Jor people, among the Isoku people, among the Indukwa, Upani people, their near childhood, the Shakiris and indeed everyone. The consensus are there that there is nothing on ground in Delta State today that is commensurate with that 4.2 trillion naira that has come to this state within this area. When confronted, Mr. President, the governor is quick to throw in our face that he has constructed a secretariat. He has constructed one flyover in Asaba. They call it Coca, Coca flyover. But, Mr. President, we don't live in isolation. Our next door neighbors are there. River State is there. Removing politics, removing party platforms. We are all Niger Delta people. So, we not stay, sit, stand here as here because they are pretty controlled states. Therefore, what is good, they show their quality. River State receives less money than Delta State. When we go to River State today, we here has constructed over a ten flyover. But River State has a construction site. In addition to that, we've also seen this intervention in the health sector with the construction of that edifices that they named after the Governor. And of course, the convention center they named for the wife, Justice Mary Uwe. And so many more. What is of interest to us, Mr. President, is that in all of this, two things. One, for purpose of construction, we used the best construction materials to lose Belgium. Thereby guarantee this, in the next thirty to fifty years, those roads, those roads, those edifices erected will stand the test of time, number one. And number two, he did not, does not owe death, died. Fourteen flyovers and those other edifices all fully paid for, no debts. Here in Delta, we receive more money than him. We have only one secretariat and one flyover. And we are owing 800 billion naira. As powerful as you are, Mr. President, in the leader of the Jod Nation, you are a debtor. Because you are part of this debt and you I know that you can see that in the Jor, I, I is a pro in there. You have various studies everywhere. But we also owe you here, you are a debtor here and involuntary debtor. Because I know you did not, you sign on, you owe part of that 800 billion naira. But you are a debtor. So too are all the Jor people. Your children are alive and doing here for four. Okoa has been voluntary, made all of us debtors. Your Majesty, Mr. President, in the course of these seven and a half years, following this receipt of this man, our people continue to agitate. Like I said, life in the riverine is basically non-assisted. And even upland, look at the roads, they're state of decay, state of fraud. Our hospitals, to the extent that any that glorify this person. You go to the schools, nothing there. And this governor has the airfare tree, has the airfare tree, one first hook to present a bill to establish three universities in one day. There's nothing wrong, I must emphasize. If you wanted the university in this community, no. Ali did it, Governor Ali did it. If I actually say I did it as a federal district, not impacting on state's resources, it was definitely wrong. After all, it didn't know what a little way comes from, it's part of the state. He went ahead, established the university in this village, established one in Adbo, established one in Asaba. But I think it's a name change in Asaba. I don't really university established. And they combated the Ozoro or the technique to university. Now, you don't have a problem with all this work. But we expected that the people who produced the wealth of this country, the resources he has used for the establishment and construction of this edifices in the village. They have been crying for so many years. Speaking of the Jors and speaking of the Shakiris. Not too long ago, I was involved by a national ruler last year. How many friends? And he drew my attention to what is going on in this environment, right? I'm a former, right? Yes. Yeah. This is what I hope. Yeah. You know, where there is that, you know, where you have a student-teacher ratio of about 600 pupils to fourteen teachers. No classrooms. They sit on the floor to learn. Prof, they are very, very lucky now. This environment, whoever could use you. How many profs, I think, can we produce from that environment? If you have a student, too good, teacher ratio of 600 to 40. But these are people who could do the wealth of this country. They've been crying for marginalization. We want a tertiary institution. The secondary education system, improve it for us. Give us teacher, make us feel like we are equal to those in Asaba. Maybe that's the one, the student-teacher ratio posted, 600 to about 300. Why can't they have? Now, you go ahead and establish these universities, not taking the middle, account. So, I decided in conversation with my friend, my stranger from Manila, that something must be done to address the agitation of the Jors, the agitation of the Shakiris and the agitation of the Indukwa, Upani. And I said, the first thing I will do the day I am in the weather is to present a bill, across a bill to the Senate, the House, seeking to amend the University of Delta law. We are not going to remove the universities already established in those places. Government is a coach, you know, you will fund them. They are all Deltas. But there must be equity. There must have a sense of belonging. Therefore, we seek to amend the University of Delta by creating a campus of the University of Delta here in Bomani Tormo, Bomani Tormo. We're not seeking a full-blown university, a campus of the University of Delta. And a committee will be set up to recommend for how to bring about the limitation of that amendment we seek. Put a campus of university here in Bomani Tormo. Put another campus in Kuku, in Woreno, to address the agitation of the Shakiris, the three warriors, and then address the agitation of the Jors here in Bomani. A decision will be made. Possibly, okay. A decision will be made, possibly, okay, an engineering faculty should be here, the university of Delta should be in Komadi and align courses. Well, I'm just using, for example, maybe the medical school could be in Kuku and align the courses, under one university system. Your university system is actually one of the things that you have own history, to say, they have proved those managing them, or a diversity as this would be, but with most of the information, if anyone who wants to study medicine, under the university of Delta system, should we decide should be in Kuku, you know that's where you're going to be engineering, you are coming to Komadi Komor. That way, on our own, so much force team to do, would have addressed that agitation resulting from a tertiary challenge. And then, of course, the Indukwa people also there, ordinarily, and seek to do the same thing, but we are in the process right now, so I guess Mr. President, Mr. President approved the federal university of Delta. And I believe that this already told, I'm sure that I could do by all, on latest message, the approval, that university for them would go, would have become the federal university, and the education would have been learned and promoted. So that would have been brought in with the Ijo and the Shakiri campus of the university of Delta. Mr. President, we know what it used to be like, where reports was functioned. We know what we were used to be like when reports was functioned. And indeed, we also remember what Kuku used to be like when reports functioned. I tell a story, Mr. President, in 2000, sorry, in nineteen, I believe nineteen ninety-eight, I mean, I bought my first car on my own, not from, okay, gift for my father, for my own sources. I want the Belgium, I want to buy Honda, Ford, I want to ship it home, I was given the choice, where would you want to ship it to? Do you want to ship it to Wory? Do you ship it to Kuku, Sapela? So there was a choice. I chose at that time Wory, because I lived in Wory. But, Mr. President, today, naturally, it's no longer there, reports physically shot down. Because of that, the economy of Wory, Sapela, Kuku, they are all dead. And we know what happens when the economy of this person is ruined to go. The unemployment challenge will face the world, the profit threshold will be reduced. So, we have decided, God willing, that Asuwaju Ametimbu is voted by, we already have an arrangement, it deals with it, that it will help us, more to reactivate the three parts, both Wory, Kuku, and Wory. Because we will need to be educated a lot, because he already knows, of course, he's been around. And it's agreed it will help us, first by dredging the Escavu, which we battle to do for so long, and we never could pull it through, because of course, we know the challenges will happen, I don't want to incorporate, I'm sure you know I'm talking about, you know, arising from conflicts with the government and all of that. Now, we've got a commitment that the Escavu Bar will betray, to have vessels and topic that, and they reactivate Kuku, reactivate the two. So all those teams that will have to have in it, it will come back again. Now, if we do that, Mr. President, the unemployment challenge, the biggest challenge we face today, but there's no homestead in Nigeria, no homestead here in the John Nation, no homestead in any part of the state, where you go by, you're nursing somebody who has gone to school, graduated eight, nine, ten years, no John. But that, that is even bigger than COVID-19, I thought I was saying, this unemployment. So these are the ways we believe that we have create employment with opportunities. For our people, which leads me again to another factor, because that relates to unemployment, the issue of insecurity. Mr. President, it does not require a focus on, we know what the challenges are, it's just that we have not done the proper investment in modernizing our security architecture. I am aware, as I said, of this, I attend security meetings, and the kind of investments some states, few states have made in their security architecture, that have not lowered the security challenges in their states. I won't mention the states, so that, it's like that, we're doing bad, you know, I feel in this country. So if we do the proper investment here, Mr. President, it doesn't require too much, maybe about eight, nine, ten billion naira in the security architecture, here, as a governor, God willing, I sit in Asaba, along with a security advisor, I can say, please, give me, I want to see a screenshot of what is going on in Pachamama for instance. And then I see movement, asking people, who are these people, what are they doing in Pachamama at this time, do they live here? You know, and then based on that, you can tell who is supposed to be there, who is not supposed to be there. Now, I'm speaking about heads men and stuff like that, you know, those who are into kidnapping, for ransom, whatever. So with that, the bulk of insecurity challenges we face today, I can sit in the government house and look at the Abraca forest, you know, the Rubun forest, for instance, and say, who will this be, who will they do here? And by the way, you, maybe you and I may disagree on this, I'm not a supporter of state police, I'm a supporter of community police, musty police, we disagree there, you know, who has pocketed a federal commissioner of police, because the resources, they are intimidating people, killing opponents, killing supporters of opponents. You can imagine if it's in full control of the appointment and the remuneration of state police, if you don't, if you go to a board, don't like your face, you know, you are out of the state, you wouldn't allow the state. So some of them are selfish, I must admit, you know, because of that debate, I said, no, I will never support state police. Maybe after I've left, others can go and pass it, they so chose, you know, but I support community police. Where you have people in the community who knows people, I think, like I said, I know, well, I know almost everybody in my place. If you see, if I see somebody who's not on that place, I don't need to be too, I already know that this place is not for my place. So when you have people in the community who knows people, I employ it as to provide community policing intelligence, you know, I think with that one, you know, coupled with the, with an enhanced security architecture, you know, the issue of security can be, can be addressed. And then I think there was also the issue of, I don't know if that's prevalent here, but in Wory, from those places, very, very prevalent. I can tell you a story, Mr. President, that I believe, I think, one time, when we were to, 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 during the time, it was one time, we would expand the runway of the Osubi airport. The job was to be given to Jolos Bajam as part of the arrangement for this, you say, you know, the airport. Jolos Bajam said, they will not come to take that job as long as Sheriff Boore is in the, is in the government, because of their experience, you know, with him as a community chairman of Osubi. So even if you remove Jolos Bajam, nobody can do, no business can do anything in that , that extortion, collecting tithes, non-government actors collecting tithes, that's what the debt is, that's what most companies have left. So if all of them are gone, who will create the jobs for our children? So I intend, God making me governor of the state, abolish the debt in all forms of, in all its forms of ramifications, one, and then two, seek to bring back now those companies, since they do not gather debt, and two, since we are improving the security architecture of the state. And when they come back, in addition to what we are not proposing, I'm sure you're familiar, prof with the 138 megawatt IPP project that was decided, you know, you're not familiar with it, so, you know, the plan we have in this state is that people believe that if they don't start the project, no matter how long they go, the project must die, they don't believe in continuity. One, only as okay, this mine own, Asaba didn't die, so, should have project was killed. The turbines, everything that was built were vandalized and sold. And in return, in place and step, they went and set up another one in Asaba, five megawatts, as opposed to the one that had eight megawatts. Now, what is that five megawatts saving, Mr. President? It is providing power to before our electricity to government house, to before our electricity to secretariat, to before our electricity to commission us, Mr. President, who does that? We don't create jobs as a governor in government house, we don't create jobs if commissioners put us, we don't create jobs in secretariat. Our job as a government is to create a neighborly environment, so that investors, private investors can come and create jobs for our children. So what I intend to do, that is not my idea, that is not our idea of an IPP, we're going to go back to original concept, that one that we get mega, mega one. But what we seek, or we seek to do, is to have the power deployed to industrial estates, who have no set of immediate industrial area. So we saw this in industrial estate, we are going to provide sites and services inland, to develop, to give them growth, give them water, and of course, to provide light there and ask all these companies on the outside, to form a set of them, to not lower that cost of doing the business, and of course, develop a share, rather than spend money on diesel, doing the same thing in Lagos or in other states, with, with, with before our power here, the other company here, doing business, of course, doing business, which is going to create jobs for our people. Now, the minister, because of this open remarks, by two megatolares, apart from this institution that is within our state, even the federal, the Ugele, Ugele Isoko Wale to Asaba, that has been, has been drawing board for almost fifteen years, just to, we gave those roads in nine months, now it's been fifteen years here in Delta, they make only two demands, only one, one demand, that in return of getting this contract, they must use local contracts, if there's need for an engineer, the engineer must come from Delta State, if there's need for an artisan, he must come from Delta State. Do not allow them to go outside, to bring in people to do this job, unless on, they are able to convince us that we don't have the, the delta. That way, I think both of the employment challenges we face in the state, it would have been, it would have been addressed. Mr. President, we also have to leave the head secretary, who should go run, because of my campaign, who went to, let him go to, for the job of one, of one, of one, in a banner, right? Mr. President, I don't believe it, because of my campaign, for the same, you know, assistance of my granny, providing roads, that's, that's, that's safer, because if I were just a regular guy on the road, no access, those speed roads are better. But, Mr. President, even at that, as fast as this speed goes, it takes about three, four hours to get there. Now imagine, you know, a woman, a Ijo woman, pregnant woman, goes into a labor, complicated labor, that needs attention of a specialist. How will she make it to the nearest hospital? It could be a strange place at hospital, and I didn't see any in the course of moving around. Now, they call their boots, they have glorified camels, that's what they are, Mr. President, camels, they just put, maybe Yamaha, an engine. So you can imagine how many hours it will take for that Ijo woman in labor to get to that Kuku or to get to Wory or Sapela, for instance. You either lose the woman and/or you lose both the woman and the, the baby. Mr. President, we are a rich state, we are a very rich state, why should that continue? And most people, Mr. President, will have, let me localize this, we have our Ijo leaders, we have our Shakiri leaders, who are in this party, the party of Okowa, who continue to chant despite all of these challenges as related, who can be the chant, whatever Okowa do, do. These are leaders who have not been able to stand up and look Okowa in the eye and say, I come from the John Nation, we produce the bulk of the wealth of this country, it is because of the wealth we produce, that's why so much is coming to the state. In fact, if you put oil in this bottle and put vegetable oil in identical bottle, and you show both of them to Okowa, Okowa cannot tell you which one is good oil and which one is vegetable oil. But he has the air country to take all these resources, pack to his place, and to the detriment of our Ijo people who have produced this wealth, who have nothing, and yet we have Ijo this state or some Ijo leader, I'm sorry, forgive me, I must say, we have some Ijo leaders, you know, clapping, clapping, are they able to speak truth to our own hospital? Give us the hospital, they cannot ask, give us a school, they cannot ask, give us lights, they cannot ask. Now, he mentioned the three KDB challenge step that in Komadi, right? How much will it cost, Mr. President, given the resources that are going to Delta State every year, if it is not weakness, tell me. And, Mr. President, even with that, don't we have leaders for this local government in this party, who, quote unquote, are friends of the governor? Why are they not able to tell the governor? This is something we should do. Mr. President, I think enough is enough. The time has come for us to stand up and speak truth to our government. Governor Boore today is revered in the John Nation, justifiably so, because of this Komadi bridge that you constructed here. If you remove that, what other edifices again would have there? If I says, since Boore, since Boore, you will not find any road, new road constructed in Delta, upland and or riverine, you don't see anything new, the roads that you see that have been patched, either Obomugya roads or they are Iboi roads. So, Mr. President, I think it's a bad time, as the leader of the international, that's what this institution is, the John National Congress, I believe it's time to also step out, we say enough is enough. And call us, and that's why I'm here, when you emerge as governor, what is the need for the John Nation? What I have to do now, I will do, is what I have, I can fight in my capacity, I can do this, as a candidate, I cannot stand before you here and say I have exclusive monopoly of ideas, I cannot. All I know I want to do is that I want to be fair, I want to be just, and I want to be equitable. What is good for the youth is good for the candidate. You cannot be working in the mountains and be collecting your pay, your share. The people who can do this well should get a commensurate recompense. So I have come today to ask, Mr. President, what is it in the event of Yomagiri today? What does the John Nation want to do? What does the job nation want to do?
Uh, he's on. Yeah. President, tell me, I want to hear. Move, move, move.
Okay, he's on, Ado.
Yeah.
Ah, he's on.
Yeah.
Bri, 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 bri. He's on. He's on, come here, here. He did it far, come here.
Come here, Ado.
Ado? Ado?
Yeah.
The members of my council. So there are the national, the secretariat of the I N C, who is from Delta, and the, 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 the national, the national secretariat of the I N C, and the, from Bayas. The I N C, all value.
I'm a radio.
Also have the chairman, Lekos. Retired chairman of seventeen plants, all sit here. In the I N C after results, uh, this is the western, the president of Delta, and Ado, and Ondu. We have seventeen plants, and from Delta, we do, we have four, four, four and two, from Ado and Ondu. Um, the Royal I N S, sit here, Royal I N S, uh, other very important activities, we can, uh, permit to stand on existing projects. But I'm most recognized by my brother, my elder brother, former minister, Booker, the job boys, irrepressible, the job boys. A man known internationally, for standing tall and strong, for good luck to the village of that. The job nation owes me our respects, always, of making us proud as a minister and a president. Uh, I have a daily commitment, the various from five and two sit down at the dock. Twenty thousand, the monument after all for that matter. Here, one Thai secretary, the monument will be on here. A very good friend, in fact, I gave him an appointment with an appointment. Thank you very much. Uh, over there, you have a Komare. Uh, if you talk about leadership of our I N C, we, we recognize them for this, on common courage, and destiny. I also saw my friend, Tony. But, but what is leader? What are you saying for? For gathering the human resource of the job people. I'm aware of the number of appointments they are doing to our people. These persons have known, these persons have known, very credible in their community. On behalf of the job nation, I want to thank them. Some of them were very active in politics, but got frustrated at some point, or took them off, and give them very much. We want to thank you for that. Uh, today I feel so humbled. Yes, as president of the Job National Congress, I received presidential colleagues. This, uh, Attiku visited the, the Vever Kamutok, S D P visited, O B visited. But I have a special touch, because this is the very first time, the governorship candidate, the governorship candidate stepping in this. And it is very symbolic, and we, I don't intend to take it for granted. Today, just like you said, we are escalating into a new paradigm. We are changing the journey deliberately. Yes, the issues of authorization, marginalization, suffocation, exploitation, social exclusion, are unending. In fact, right from the colonial days, down to ninety six, we saw ourselves, though, among the four pluggers, the international industry stock, divided into, into, what do you say, city? City, places, places like Ado, that way you will produce a person. You do the old job, you can't even produce a, a, a commission. In Aquagame States, our people, I mean, three don't have off, they are still stuck. So, the job nation under my leadership, after introspection, we started to apply or adopt the principle of constructing a nation. Military has taken us, us, we have seen, we could. But we decided that, we have applied some of it, the method of process, because I think this continues. Let us retrospect, and give ourselves a new challenge. No more lamentation. Job people never lament anymore. We have decided to take this. We have decided to confront our challenges, our problems. Frontally, that's why we go visit the president of this country. And give him preset conditions, on which the job nation will remain committed to the I N C. We told him, we have more reasons to succeed from this country, than leave us. We have more reasons, and told him, look, if you don't restructure this nation, to the point where we manage and control our resources, then leave it. If you don't give us additional space, we shall also leave. If you also don't bring back all those fire companies, who can do business in Ibaru, because it's safe for them to extract the resources. But it's not safe for them to leave. It's also safe for them to pay taxes. If you cannot get ports located to areas that are naturally suitable for ports, because of a minority. I went to hear about the national level are calculating, down to the state, and the government. You are very correct, I was certain, in your articulation of the problems we face at the people. You are also very correct, that the greatest problem of the job man is the job man. The selfishness of the job market. Move because of crumbs, and immediate gratification, I decided to sell, but the conscience and soul of the speed, what has been accomplished. But a few of us have decided to stand tall, when we speak things in front. There is a deliberately constituted and a political engagement committee, to interface with all the political black actors. That Attiku came, was delivered. We said if they can go to Alwa, that they can go to Owanese. If they can also meet with Odudua, they must come to us. The job have over forty million political capital. Because we are across six states, in Ademawo, there are indigenous people communities. And all of these are under the I N C umbrella. In Delta State, we know are voting straight. In Delta State, in the last two elections, it is on record, that when you talk about bush roots, bush blood, those bloods are from our place. If they go to be any injustice, I am the one, the present oracle of the job nation. If I talk this, hate, or whatever I say, I'll defend it. I don't, I brought my own, came by, by, by media people, and as I'm talking, I'm heard all over the world. No endorsement on doing any governorship, no. First, I have no sense. We shall allow, but that will be after a proper examination of the persons involved. Actually, this is important and important. What secrets development we need is a competence, character, the comportment, the compassion, and credibility of the leader. It's not the name you have, it's not the flag you belong to. It is the compassion, and these things are invaluable, because they are the ones. A goat will remain a goat, a pig will remain a pig, but are you taking from the bush to the forest? It is, a kind man, as a poor man would be kind, a kind man, as a rich man would be kind. A loquacious man, as a poor man will remain loquacious. So, there is always a buildup to anything. Today, we have gathered as a job nation. In fact, I want to thank you for recognizing the job institution. I also want to thank you, I will have used another word, but let me use one thank you, so that I'm not misspoke. For identifying the role we can play, and we shall play, in defining a destiny in Delta State. I will not say much, because I don't believe in propaganda. I think we have to be strategic, so I just want to welcome you on behalf of everybody. Then again, we are going to have a closed door session, with just two, three, four person, where you shall sit down, saying, that setting commitment you want me to us. Why people go about saying, oh, so, so.
Yeah.
You discover that, at the end of day, of the day, they are just looking for appointments and committees. Whether we support, whether we support a party or not, it's a constitutional requirement that we are part of. If we don't even decide to support you, if all the job people decide not to support, it is your constitutional responsibility, in fact, it's an obligation, to give us a committee. So the support should not be because you are looking for a committee. We must go into a baguette, with serious commitment, that some, most of the things should have already been tried. Which is a plain education that you are a man of the rush. You understand that, President? Some of us have spoken about this, except for me. We have been pardonsed. I'm also not new to the politics of the other state. First and foremost, I schooled from here, from primary, secondary university, to PhD, all of this from this village, I did not stay in the other place. I became a professor from this village. I thought of that brother. And when you talk about Wurung, I passed through, in fact, I closed my eyes and drive past Wurung. I've been a local player, so most of the issues you have confessed. I tell you that I'm also very familiar with it. And that is why, when you talk about the poverty of people, I can smell it, I can taste it, I can feel it. And I'm also very dogged in ensuring that not kill this person. We don't have any business before. I have historical records of the resources to produce a people. So when the jobs were even looking for government, and I said it should not be based on sentiment, it was a time of meeting, I said it. And those of them who are there, will bear no question. I say, the, 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 the request for a governorship should not be based on sentiments, no, no, it's the relationship. I was one of the three persons selected by Gori, for power shift. When we're talking about power shift, we wrote it off, I was the secretary of the committee. We listed the injustices we have faced as a people of Delta State. And we also, also enumerated our potentials as a people. So when we, we went to places, we, we defended the culture, the four persons, you and other leaders. It was not on the basis of sentiment, I tell you, if you could say it, somebody will handle it. Sentiment will not take you anywhere.
Ah, he's on. Yeah. Ah, he's on. Yeah.
So all I'm saying in effect is this. We must decide where to go by it. It's not me that will decide for you. I've decided to call off, the invitation was to me. If I wanted to take the decision myself, I would have invited, you have now gone to this. And whatever is given to me, that will be for me a good one, but that is not progress. You are my sole entity. When we take a decision, you are the ones that will implement it. The job nation knows what is good for them. We have tried several, but I think we are all desirous of positive change. I'm also very sure, when the job man says, a normal, a normal parent, when they have seen the brightness of something, they also know. The job people cannot be treated evenly. The masses of the job people cannot be cajoed. Even for the possible, I will now call them, so go and vote possible, I tell you, I will be, come and be a witness. Come and hear it, speak it. Come and listen to it. Then, on the basis of this, take an informed position. And when we take that position, we stand by it. We stand by it. We have done it in the past, and should be rest assured that we do it now. I will do it, ensuring that the job people, the job people will be free from slavery, we are slaves. Wherefore, why we produce the wealth of the nation? It's unacceptable. Like I said earlier, I'm not endorsing, but endorsement will come as a collective decision for people. So when that statement is made, it's not, they suffer now. It's almost separate to remain ambivalent. We have decided to work, to do the work. We have decided to work, to do the working, and not to just make statements. At the end of the day, it is not about what you say that supports, it's about what is the entire world is aware, that of your Maggi Giri is here. Other political party members are also here, and they are all waiting to hear the president of I N C bless and endorse, I will not, I will not, because it's not in our culture. Like I said earlier, we have suffered so much, that we are interested in result, and not to make propaganda. It's not what you give to rough students, I'll give to rough students more than you are looking for. You are looking for things that will turn our life around. You talked about the romance of hospitals and hospitals. We've seen all of them, we have lost another one. We attribute it to wishes, and wizards, innocent wishes and wizards are accused of issues that will have been taken care of by the end of time. We have produced the resources that should make any government give us hospitals, take a road to Guti, and for their vision, and for us, and for our own, who will justify the fact we don't have like, the can't look at the people that, what is justified? Like I said earlier, we are not yet doing that, we have to work assiduously towards a common objective, and that common objective is that things will change. Ah, Isom! Yeah! Things will change. So I will leave this segment of this Christmas, then, maybe I will call yourself, I will be chairman, then we'll have our mind, concerning issues, I will think, we must see. Ah, Isom! Yeah! Ah, Isom! Yeah!
We thank you for commenting on our videos, please keep commenting. If you've not subscribed to our YouTube channel, please do so for regular updates. Keep watching Juvenes and keep buying Juvenes. Juvenes is published bi-monthly by Punnax Communications Limited. For inquiries, event coverage, or advert placement, call 0803 360 8271, 0805 787 1199, 0702 811 3638, or 0808 152 4499, or visit www.juvenes.punnax.net. Juvenes Magazine, inspiring the young at heart.